Jehovah is the Lord From everlasting, to everlasting Jehovah is the Lord
Jehovah is the Lord
Is the Lord
Jehovah is the Lord
Is the Lord
From everlasting, to everlasting Jehovah is the Lord
Jehovah is the Lord Ancient of the system From generation to generation Jehovah is the Lord Is the Lord
Jehovah is the Lord Is the Lord From everlasting, to everlasting Jehovah is the Lord
Sabona ambe, kuwa mi eyenyeneyo
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 Oh eyenyeneyo
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 Eyenyeneyo Hallelujah eh
Hallelujah eh
Hala Hallelu, 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 hallelujah Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah Hallelujah, hallelujah Hallelujah eh
Hallelujah eh
Oh, sana to Jesus
Oh, sana eh You are worthy, oh my friend All glory belongs to you
You are worthy
You are worthy, oh my friend All glory belongs to you
You are worthy
You are worthy, oh my friend All glory belongs to you You are worthy, oh my friend All glory belongs to you
Zither taking dance to the next level
Ninety-three million miles from the blistering surface of the sun hangs the planet earth The ultimate creation from an infinite mind An unbelievably intricate complex design A supernatural testimony and irrefutable sign That there is... ...a God
Anything in your life that the enemy has put there to destroy you This very hour I announce their expiry date in the name of Jesus
I prophesy upon somebody here All the powers gather to waste you By the power of the God of Elijah they shall be wasted I prophesy upon somebody here Every wasting agent assigned to frustrate you shall be buried alive I prophesy upon the life of somebody here that your enemies shall destroy themselves I decree upon your life That any witchcraft power hiding anywhere to fire arrows at your destiny Let the arrows backfire now in the name of Jesus Elijah, amen! All I've done now You shall dance, you shall dance
Ladies and gentlemen
Get ready as we make welcome the on deck
Four, three, two, one, on deck
There can be no life without order Good, evil, darkness, light There must be balance in the universe Such is the decree of the charge house An ancient body charged by the creator To preserve the very fabric of existence But the balance has been broken The beginning
The beginning Darkness moved across the face of the deep And God said Let there be light And there was light And God saw the light and that it was good He divided the light from the darkness
Today we're looking at the God of Daniel The God of Daniel We had a brother Long time ago I went to study abroad First-class brain The day I saw him I was ministering to him He loved at me He said "Daniel, you carry your SUV from Nigeria to this place?" He didn't listen to me Again he did his master's cut distinction And we wished him bye-bye that he was going back to Nigeria And we've all forgotten about him All of a sudden one day I got a letter The letter said "From His Majesty's Prison" Prison, Majesty I looked at it Behold, it was this Nigerian man That we thought he had gone home Not knowing that he had been stealing money by trick and he was caught at the airport He said "Come and see me at the prison" It is now I realize that what you were telling me was true When you are coming please buy toothpaste, buy apple, buy this, buy that When I saw the letter my first reaction was that I was afraid I said "Hey, this man who wrote to me now" Who they say we are the same? So I made up my mind that I will not go to that prison So I put the letter somewhere All of a sudden I heard the voice of the priest He said "Son, arise and go" So I went, I saw him, he cried He said "You see if I'd listened to you I would not be here" Now I'm born again and I've been preaching to all these people in the prison But every time I preach to them they say "You know about Jesus and you got here" Amen So we started praying Confessing things before the Lord They took him to court The first time he came to court who were there too? We sat at the back, were quietly praying in tongues That judge was very aggressive He said "You foolish, stupid Nigerians" "You come here and start stealing, you do all kinds of things" "You want to mess up this place the way you mess up your country" was very aggressive He said "By the time I finish with you your parents in Nigeria will not recognize you" I said "This is problem" And we were praying The more we prayed the more aggressive the judge became We now said "Okay, the God of Daniel has his sovereign power" "He can remove and replace" So we prayed for his removal By the time we came to the court again that judge had been sacked Do you understand what I'm saying? Then the new judge when he had the case was still praying in tongues He said "What's your name?" Father mentioned his name "You have a first class in estate management?" He said "Yes" "And you came to this country you got a distinction in masters?" He said "Yes my lord" "And then you are stealing money?" He said "Yes my lord" "I see" "So you are, I think you only have one problem" "You're a madman" "See because of that I will not jail you" "I will send you to your country so they can look after your madness there" Amen That was how he was released We knew that he was not mad That God of Daniel is here today And if you want him to bombard you with the army Shout it loudest "Hallelujah" Thank you Jesus
Five, four, three, two, one
For the price that you paid And the love that you showed And the prayer that you made I will make Jesus proud For every praise that you praise And the love that you show And the prayer that you made I will make Jesus proud We will be burning that prayer We will be burning that breach We will be burning that hostility I will make Jesus proud Where you go, where you go, that you go Hey Oh Jesus, I've made up my mind to follow I'll follow you It is written about me to follow I must walk the walk of the one who sent me While it is here we must walk Here we must walk, we must walk Till we see him face to face
But then your heads beloved tell the Lord Spirit of Father Envelope my life In Jesus' name we pray
Women shout "Hallelujah"
If you know
That you are a righteous woman A woman that is arise That has arise in every aspect of our lives And you know that the God of mountain of fire and miracle ministries That answers by fire Has taken you to the next level already Shout "Hallelujah" We're in a prayer section And the topic of my section Is divine enablement for my home Divine enablement for my home The book of John chapter 1 Verse 4 and 5 It says "In him was life" And the life in Jesus Is the light of men The light shinet in darkness And darkness comprehend it not You are going to pray the first prayer I want you to get angry in your spirit Shoot every strength you have to pray Say "Powers of darkness" I signed against my home Today is your head In the name of Jesus Powers of darkness I signed against my home Today is your head Die now Command them to die Mapos antakapiya Libos zandaa Pokas entayabos Command them to die In Jesus mighty name we pray Acts chapter 16 verse 26 It says when Paul and Silas prayed The foundation of the prison was shaking And something extraordinary happened Something extraordinary is gonna happen in your home Something extraordinary is going to happen in your marriage The foundation of the prison was shaking And in the book of elders Written by my father and the Lord God It says "Stop them before they stop you" Say "Foundation of cage of my father's house" Holding my home captive In this section you use your two hands to pray Your legs to pray The whole of your body must shake Something is gonna happen this morning Are you ready to pray? Say "Every cage of darkness" Holding my home captive Pray! Ahah, mapos antakapiya Libos zandaa Mareke senteleboz Ahah, command them to break Command them to break Use your two hands, your two legs The whole of your body Maret senteleboz Libos zandakapiya Pokas entayabos Mareke po, pokas entayabos Ahah, they must be shaking Ahah, command them to break Let down foundational satanic gates Be shaken off! Continue, continue, continue That sister continue Ahah, mapos antakapiya Libos zandakapo Marek senteleboz and daya Don't negotiate, don't negotiate Don't negotiate In deliverance ministry There is no room for negotiation Ahah, ahah Continue, continue Jesus mighty name we pray Listen to me We are not here this morning to pray The foul night must take it by force Sam 2 verse 8 It says "Ask of me And I shall give thee the eden for thy inheritance And the uttermost part of the earth for thy possession" You are still going to pray You are going to pray Say "My Father" Push my home to the next level Remember we are praying for the divine enablement for your home My Father Push my home to the next level In the name of Jesus Push my home to the next level Push my home to the next level My Father Push my home to the next level Push my home to the next level Push my home to the next level Pia kapoz zandakaporia Ahah, push my home to the next level Jesus mighty name we pray This is the second to the last prayer in this section Look for a friend that you know that can pray very well Make sure that person can pray very well If the person cannot pray drop him a hand pick another person Hold the two hands of your friends Say anything in your life Attacking the glory of God in your marriage As I shake you now Come out! Ahah, they must come out Mapos antakapiya Libos zandaa Pokas entayabos Maret senteleboz Ahah, yes, yes, come out Anything in your life Mareke po zandakaporia Pokas enteleboz Pia kapoz zandaa Maret senteleboz Ahah, come out Come out, come out, come out, come out, come out, come out Fire, move, ahah Like the fire of God begin to move From person to person, 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 from person to person Pokas entayabos Jesus mighty name we pray The last prayer in this section Raise your two hands for the heavenish You are going to shout this last prayer Say "Oh God Allah" Answer your name in my home Because answer your name in my marriage Answer your name in the life of my children Oh God Allah Answer your name in my home In the name of Jesus
Louder, louder, louder Oh God Allah Answer your name In my home Answer your name Answer your name In the name of Jesus In Jesus Christ name we pray If you know and you know very well That that session of prayer That you have just prayed now That God has done something great in your life I want you to shout one victorious "Hallelujah" If you know and you know very well That this program God has packages for your life For your family and for my family I want you to shout three thousand "Hallelujah" Louder Thank you Jesus We are in another segment Another session of prayer Titled "Libration" From ancestral bondage Libration for what? Ancestral bondage Bible say in the book of Lamentations chapter 5 Verse 7 Say "Our fathers have sinned They are no more But the children's teeth have been set on an edge What we have not done That our ancestors have done That we are passing through the pain today By the power in the name of Jesus We are free from it today in the name of Jesus We are going to take one prayer like this Say "I bless him" I want you to fix your name there Say "I bless him" Hear the word of the Lord In the name of Jesus I bless him Hear the word of the Lord "Arise! 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 "In the name of Jesus. "Thank you, Father. "In Jesus' name we pray. "The book of John, chapter 8, verse 36. "Say, "If the Son made you free, "if the Son has set you free, "you shall be free indeed. "We thank God for Jesus Christ "that has set us free from those bondagees. "And we are free indeed in the name of Jesus. "We are going to pray like this. "Ancestral bondage "of my father's house. "Ancestral bondage "of my mother's house "that have tied me down "to one spot. "Enough is enough. "I break myself loose "with our two hands, "with our two legs, "with our two hands, "with our two legs. "I break! 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 "In the mighty name of Jesus. "In Jesus' name we pray. "Say, chains or limitation. "Ancestral chain or limitation. "That have tied my two legs together. "Enough is enough. "Break by fire. 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 "Shake your leg. "Break by fire. "Break by fire. "Break by fire. "Break by fire. "Break! 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 "Break by fire. "In the name of Jesus. "Thank you, Father. "In Jesus' name we pray. "Blood of Jesus Christ. "Shout it louder. "Say, 'Blood of Jesus Christ. "Arise in your power. "Set me free today. "Set me free today "on every ancestral bondage "of my father's house, "of my mother's house, "of my in-laws' house, "of my environment "that have limited my potential. "Blood of Jesus. "Blood of Jesus. "Blood of Jesus. "Set me free today. 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 "Set me free. 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 "In the name of Jesus. "In Jesus' name we pray. "Say, "I break myself loose. "You cannot stand one place and break yourself loose. "Say, "I break myself loose "from every ancestral bondage "that have tied me down "in the valley of witchcraft. "I break myself loose. "I break myself loose. "I break my children loose. "I break my husband loose. "I break my husband loose. "I break myself loose "from every ancestral bondage "that have tied my destiny down "to the valley of witchcraft "by the power "in the name of Jesus. "I break! 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 "In the name of Jesus. "In Jesus' name we pray. "Raise your two hands to the heavenly. "Say, "Jesus Christ! "The yoke breaker. "The bondage breaker. "Jesus Christ! "The bondage breaker. "The yoke breaker. "Break my yoke! "In the name of Jesus. "Jesus Christ! "The yoke breaker. "The bondage breaker. "I am available. "Break my yoke now. 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 "Break my bondage. "Break me now. "Break me loose. 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 "In the name of Jesus. "Thank you, Father. "In Jesus' name we pray. "Say, "I walk out by fire. "Say, "I walk out by fire "from every bondage "of my father's house, "of my mother's house "by the power "in the blood of Jesus. "I walk out. 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 "Walk out! "Walk out! "Walk out! "Walk out! "Na, na, 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 na. "Walk out! "Walk out, walk out, walk out. "I walk out by fire "from every bondage "of my father's house, "of my mother's house. "In Jesus mighty name we pray. "Shout through fire, amen! "Beloved, we are still praying. "In this session, "we are want to get freedom from satanic oppression. "Freedom from satanic oppression. "Remember in the book of Philistinos, "chapter 3, "verse 9. "He said, 'Now therefore, "behold the cry of the children of Israel "has come unto me. "And I have also seen "the affliction of the Israelites. "I want you to pray like this. "Say, "Powers "of my father's house. "Powers "of my mother's house. "Powers "of my in-laws' house "oppressing me their night. "Your time is up! "I say, 'Pray now! "Drop me my hands! "Commander to die! "Commander to die! "Commander to die! "Commander to die! "Oh yes, commander part to die! "Power in your father's house. "Power in your father's house. "Power in your in-laws' house "oppressing you their night. "Commander to die! 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 "In the name of Jesus. "Commander to die! "Thank you, Father. "Hey, Jesus mighty name we pray. "Witchcraft arrow of oppression. "Witchcraft arrows of oppression. "Holding my destiny bondage. "Your time is up this morning. "I shake you out by fire. "I shake you out by fire. "I shake you out by fire. "Every witchcraft arrow "of oppression "holding my lifey bondage. "I shake you out. 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 "Shake it out. "The one hand in your womb. "Shake it out. "The one hand in your breast. "Shake them out. "Shake them out. "I shake you out. "I shake you out. "Every witchcraft arrow "of oppression "holding your lifey bondage. "Shake them out. "I shake you 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 out. "Hey, Jesus mighty name we pray. "Say, "Any power anywhere "that have vowed "that I will never be free from oppression. "You are a liar! "Commander part to die! "Commander part to die! "Commander part to die! "Commander part to die! "In the name of Jesus. "Any power anywhere "that have vowed "that you will never be free "from satanic oppression. "Commander part to die! "Napa mo die! "In the name of Jesus. "Thank you, Father. "Hey, Jesus mighty name we pray. "Satanic chain of oppression. "Tie my two hands together. "Tie my two legs together. "By the power in the blood of Jesus. "Use your hands. "Use your two hands. "Use your two legs. "Break at that. 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 "In the name of Jesus. "Thank you, Father. "Hey, Jesus mighty name we pray. "Mighty name we pray. "Satanic erotic power "from my father's house. "From my mother's house. "From my in-laws' house. "That has hold my impotent. "That has hold me captive. "Today is your end. "Release me! "Da! 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 "Commander part to die! "Da, da, 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 da. "Release me a da! 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 "Commander to release you a da! "Release me a da, oh yes! "Release me a da, release me a da! 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 "Thank you, Father. "Hey, Jesus mighty name we pray. "Lamentations, chapter 3, verse 37. "He say, 'Who is he that said and he come to pass?' "When the Lord has not commanded. "Say, "Any power "that have vowed "that deliverance prayers will not solve my problem. "Wherever you are, "your time is up! "Commander to die! "Commander to die! "Any power anywhere "that have vowed "that deliverance prayers "will not set you free "from oppression "from satanic oppression. "Commander part to die! "In the name of Jesus. "Hey, Jesus mighty name we pray. "Pray the last day of participation like this. "Raise up your two hands to the heavenly. "Say, "I receive freedom "from every satanic oppression "by the power "in the blood of Jesus. "I receive freedom. "I receive freedom. "I receive freedom "from every satanic oppression "by the power "in the blood of Jesus. "I receive freedom. "I receive my freedom "from every satanic oppression "by the power "in the blood of Jesus.
"In Jesus mighty name we are empowered. "Thank you very much for your patience, sisters. "We welcome you into the month of March. "And we trust God to match us "into His divine favor "and uplifting in Jesus' name. "Amen, let's listen to the following announcements. "We don't have any intention of keeping you longer than needful. "We want to inform all of us "that there's going to be "a special women's program. "It is a health seminar. "We all know that we need "this for our lives. "And so the Women's Foundation has arranged it. "And the theme is winning the battle of womanhood. "It is scheduled to hold on Saturday, 29th of March "at the MFM International Headquarters Grace Auditorium. "Registration will start by 8:00 a.m. "The program will start in earnest by 9:00. "We invite all our women members in Lagos State "to attend physically "while provision will be made for the virtual attendance "of all our women in the other states and in the diaspora. "We have been announcing it all the time "and we will say it again that we need "to identify with the Women's Foundation "by joining any of the groups. "As the Lord will help us to function in. "Glorious young wives, "sanitation angels who keep the house of God clean, "destiny builders, "the Bible and Books Group, "Empowerment Department, "the Evangelism Group, "the kneeling women who pray for all of us. "The Health Group, "Counseling Group, "Publication and Writing, "Support Group "for those who want to help us with their substance. "We would like you to join any one of these groups. "Also, "we want to appeal to all of us "who need to key into this initiative of the Women's Foundation. "That's the Adult Literacy Class. "To ensure that all of us "are able to read and to write. "This class holds every Friday, "except the Friday preceding Power Must Change Hands. "The venue is the Mountaintop Secondary School behind the children's church. "And the time is between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. "The Evangelism Group The Evangelism Group. Members of the Women's Foundation. The Evangelism Group members of the Women's Foundation. You are to meet immediately after this program. At the testimony stand for your outing. The Lord go before you and with you in the name of Jesus. Again, the members of the Glorious Young Wives Group. Your next meeting is scheduled to hold on the 8th of April. By 9am at the Elijah Hall. Again. The next physical meeting of the Bible and Books Group. Will hold on the 16th of March. 16th of March. Immediately after service. At the Joy Auditorium Gallery upstairs. Our dear women. For any inquiries that you have. For registration. For counseling. Please visit us at the Women's Foundation office. At the glass house. First floor. Room 2.2. The next edition of this program. Will hold. By the grace of God. On Sunday the 6th of April. I pray that all of us, the Lord will grace us to be there in health and wealth in Jesus' name. Thank you very much, let's take this prayer point. As we await our beloved Daddy in the Lord. For his importation. Declare like this. In this year 2025. My destiny shall receive divine speed. For fulfillment. In this year 2025. My destiny shall receive divine speed for fulfillment. In the mighty name of Jesus. All the promises of God for my life shall become. Fulfilled in the name of Jesus. Promises of God shall turn to testimonies in my life. In the mighty name of Allah Jesus Christ. Declare it in faith and receive it. And pray for us. That our prayer banks. We receive divine interest of answered prayers. In the mighty name of Allah Jesus Christ. Pray. Say my own prayer bank. Only receive divine interest. Of answered prayers. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ. My prayer bank. Receive divine interest. Of answered prayers. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ. In Jesus mighty name we pray. Take this one as we await our Daddy. Say my labor in prayers. Shall not be in vain. In the mighty name of Jesus. My labor in prayers. Shall not be in vain. In the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus. In Jesus' name we pray. Add this to it. Say. My home. Be enabled. For freedom. My home. Receive divine enablement. For freedom. In the name of Jesus pray. Oh God my Father. Liberate me. Liberate my husband. Liberate my children. From every ancestral bondage. In the name of Jesus. Liberate me. Liberate my husband. Liberate my children. From every ancestral bondage. In the name of Jesus. Pray, 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 pray in the name of Jesus. Pray in the name of Jesus. In Jesus mighty name we pray. Shall we all rise as we take this one? Shall we all rise? We have lived since morning. The Lord will strengthen us for the remaining minutes. Say I free myself! I free myself! From every satanic oppression. By the power. In the blood of Jesus. I free myself! From every satanic oppression. By the power. In the blood of Jesus. In Jesus mighty name we pray. And so shall it be in Jesus' name.
Let's raise our two hands to the Lord and pick a song of praises in your mouth. And sing it loud and clear to the King of Kings and to the Lord of Lords. Make sure your voice is the loudest as you sing a song of praise to the Lord. Greatness. How gracious is the Lord. How gracious is the Lord. For the rest of us. You move back the world to the side. Of the mighty. Amen. Amen. Let your amen roar like fire and like thunder. As I pray these prophetic prayers. Father, we thank you. For your word saves. Oh thou that hearest prayer. Unto thee shall flesh come. As many of your daughters as are gathered here today. And there is any conspiracy against them. Against their lives. Against their homes. Against their children. Let them receive your deliverance in the name of Jesus. I decree. Now any power that is working against your peace. Any power that has made it a full-time assignment. To steal from you and to trouble your soul. Let all your troglodytes of Israel be troubled in the name of Jesus. Let them be troubled in the name of Jesus. It is written that they will work in the flesh. We do not work after the flesh. The weapons of our warfare are not canon. But I mighty through God to the pulling down of strongholds. Casting down every imagination. And every eye thing. That exhausts itself against the knowledge of God. And bringing it to captivity. All thoughts that will be dance of Christ. Any strong goal within or without. Backling anyone here. I pull them down in the name of Jesus. I put them down. I put them down. I put them down. Let your amen roar like thunder. I put them down. 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 Receive your deliverance. Receive your healing. Receive your breakthrough. In the name of Jesus. Any good thing that has been stolen from you. Recover them by fire in the name of Jesus. By the time you come for the next prayer meeting. You will be a bigger bundle of testimonies. Cover your family with the blood of Jesus. In Jesus mighty name we pray. Another share the grace in fellowship. The sweet heart should have to this prayer. Be with us.